Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and convene this special council meeting at the Village Council of Forest Park. It's Monday, August 25th. We are going to suspend the regular rules. And we'll begin with roll call. Ma'am Clerk.
Commissioner Maxham.
Here.
Commissioner Nero. Commissioner Mallon-Groban.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Mayor Hoskins.
Here. Okay. Public comment.
Thomas Kovek. Where are we doing the public comment? Over here. Yeah, please.
I know it may be hard to believe, but the Altenheim property future use was subject matter in the comprehensive plan of 2014.
You have three minutes.
Of 2014.
You have three minutes.
I hope we do something that we will not regret in the future with the disposition of this property. Moderate residential development would seem satisfactory, as well as a certain amount of land for public park space. But let's not overbuild or have no building. Let's be sensible. And let's not put ourselves in a bind because we have a very unclear future financial going on as to our future liabilities, pension funding, things like that. So I think you have to look at the whole context of the village's financial condition with whatever decision is made.
Thank you, Mr. Kovek.
Gene Armstrong.
Gene Armstrong, 7753 Van Buren, number 516, Forest Park. I'm the Chair of Concerned Van Buren Citizens. I really don't have anything to say that we haven't already said repeatedly, but I might like to have a comment once I hear what is presented today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Leah Shapiro.
Hi, everyone. Beautiful day. I'm Leah Shapiro. I've lived in the Grove since it was built in 2006. And I thought there was going to be a YMCA there. And that would have been lovely, I guess. But the issue that Mr. Marty Talalian always brought up, and is still an issue, is parking, parking, parking. So what do we do about parking if we put something there? Then Fenwick wanted to use it as a football field. And no, that didn't happen. And then somebody wanted to use it to do a mini Ravinia. We'll talk about parking. Forget it. Okay? And so we had many, many, many meetings like this. We had stickers. We went around the whole village. This is like going on and on and on. And I just hope that we'll come to some consensus, or the board will, about what's gonna happen at the Altenheim. I mean, most people I know like the open space concept. And I like open space. I look out onto it. But I know that there could be some kind of low kind of housing there, maybe, you know, because we need the taxes. So whatever we do, we need to do a balance.
I'm Marty Talalian. I live at 7335 Jackson Boulevard. I guess I'd like to make two points, really. One of them is that, you know, we have an elected taxing body that's responsible for parks and recreation. I don't know if any of them are here. I didn't see anyone coming in. But they are responsible, parks and recreation, not this elected body. So that I hope that the village keeps in mind that, and the people in the village keep in mind that, you know, if they want additional green space, which I can certainly understand that reasoning or that thought, then they should be working to get people on the park board that support that and hopefully are willing to buy a portion of the Altenheim. I guess so that my first point is that the parks are really, if we're gonna have green space, it should be the parks that are doing it. They're the elected body. They're the taxing body. They should be the one to do it. The other thing, too, that I want to bring up, and I'm sure it's nothing new to anybody, really, but we read it in the paper, you know, you hear about our financial condition. And obviously, there's a projected large deficit. Now, we gave the park the tot lots and a number of lots. Essentially, gave it to them. We give them the 100-year lease for a dollar, 99-year lease for a dollar. And I questioned this. I talked to an attorney, and they said, "That's legal. You can do that. You can do that for nonprofits as well." You cannot do it for, as far as I know, and I'm sure our village attorney could clarify that. But I really want to encourage the village not to gift any property to the park or any other government organization or nonprofit. We're not in the financial position to do that, from what I've read. And it doesn't make sense for us to gift land, or lease land for 99 years for a dollar when we're in the kind of condition where we are. So I hope that, you know, if these deficits are real, it's the vital services that have to be focused on. We need leaders to focus on those and not cheerleaders for whatever. So I know it's not an easy decision, but I hope that you recognize what the council is for and what the responsibility of the village council is. Thanks.
That was the last one.
All right. So we're at the conclusion of public comment, unless anyone has a sheet that they haven't turned in yet. All right. All right, so here, we're here for a discussion regarding the future use of the Altenheim-owned village property. I think most people know that the village acquired this property in the early 2000s, before anybody on this dais was serving in elective office. And the village has owned it for a number of years and has paid on it. And eventually, we cleared it of some of the crumbling buildings that were there. And we entered into an agreement with the state of Illinois that staff will take us through this evening. So with that said, before we turn it over to staff to do their presentation, if any of the commissioners want to give opening statements, that's just fine. Commissioner Vogt.
I just want to open the meeting by thanking the mayor and Administrator Entler for working to continue this process. I know we started it with a meeting a couple months ago, focusing a little bit more on the Altenheim now, and we'll be expanding that into the future uses, discussion about all of our village-owned property. But I just want to say that, as all of you know, this is sort of long overdue. So I appreciate all of you being here. I appreciate all of you continuing to show up for this. And I thank you all for working here in the village with us to host this meeting and continue the conversation.
Any other commissioners? Rachel.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you all for joining us tonight. As Commissioner Vogt said, this meeting, I think, is long overdue. We've had a lot of conversations about certain aspects of the Altenheim. And when really looking at development of the Altenheim, I really felt that there were a couple checkmarks that we needed to get off of our plate before we could start the real conversation about what we wanted to do with the village-owned Altenheim property. So as I sent in the email to you, we have a couple, you know, I guess I'll call them outstanding issues that I think that are worthy of discussion. And so I'm gonna go ahead and kind of just go through this list. This list that I sent you was by no means exhaustive. I'm sure there may be some other things that come up along the way, but they at least address some of the major issues that we have to kind of figure out, I think, before we can take those next steps. So I'm gonna start with the bike path. We've talked about the bike path a couple times in the last, in the last two years, for sure. A couple details about the bike path. The current IGA that we have is an extension of the original IGA, and it expires on December 31st of this year. We have already invested about $75,000 into this project. There was a suggestion that was made to the proposed initial design of the bike path to move it to the west side of the property. Staff was directed to reach out to the grant, the Invest in Cook program, to see if we could use the remaining grant money that we had to look at redesigning the bike path. And unfortunately, we were told that because we had already used funds for a design proposal, that we could not use this grant to do a redesign of it. The next phase of money that we have in this grant would be for construction. So one of the options that, the two options that we have would be to, you know, try to use the money before the end of this year, which really is kind of not possible at this moment. And so what they suggested was that one of the things that we could do is to forego this IGA and reapply with a opportunity to redesign the bike path. They also had concerns that the money that, you know, when we put the grant application in 2020, the cost for the project was significantly less than it would be here in 2025. And so by putting in a new grant application, one, we could put in for grant funding for design and construction. And then also, we could up the amount of money that we would potentially need to meet the costs of 2025, 2026, as opposed to 2020, when we put in. So at this point, staff is just looking for direction as to how the council wants to proceed with this Invest in Cook IGA. If you have any questions in regards to, you know, any outstanding issues that we have with the grant as it is, you know, we have Director Blunkie and Jim Emilio from Burke that can help answer any questions. But based on the information that staff has gotten, we are thinking that the best remedy to the situation would be to close out the current Invest in Cook IGA and then have further discussion as to whether or not the council has a desire to apply for the grant again in the future for a bike path.
It doesn't matter. I think, given some of the hiccups that sort of presented themselves, we didn't know, for instance, that there would be the sort of ComEd utility pole situation, which is one of the reasons I heard somebody say, "Why can't we finish it this year?" There's some utilities that need to be moved, and they probably wouldn't get done before the end of the year. And this grant expires, and we don't get any of our money back if we start the project and don't finish it by December 31st. So in all likelihood, we couldn't finish the project, is one of the reasons, main reasons. And I also think, given the fact that we are proceeding more aggressively with conversations about the future of the Altenheim, it does seem like not the best idea at this point to be putting a brand-new bike path along the east side of the property if it's potentially gonna get dug up for curb cuts for, you know, streets or any sort of construction projects or anything like that. Which is also why I think it would behoove us to explore, looking at the west side of the property. That could be, you know, great to still have the bike path, considering the fact that the Prairie Path is extending, that the Cook County is really interested in connecting all of these paths. So I think we, I don't want to get, like, too hopeful, but I think this project could potentially, you know, get, we could receive the grant if we applied for it again, because we do want to start seeing all of these different paths connected. It's really exciting to think Forest Park might have a trailhead in the near future. So I don't want to abandon the idea of a bike path over there, but I do think on the east side, as proposed at this point, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. But I would like to see us applying next year, especially if we figure out that the west side makes more sense and is a viable option.
I share the same assessment in terms of the feasibility of the grant and the timing and the location. And certainly, financially speaking, delaying the decision to, and looking at options in the future will allow the village to cover more of the costs of the bike path. And we're very invested in alternative sources of transportation and putting Forest Park on the map for biking in the community and connecting communities together. But we want to make sure that we can cover more of the costs of the bike path and the trailhead and, you know, wherever we decide that is best to put it. It seems like there's path right now, but, you know, we're making lots of decisions about construction and how we're, you know, we, there's lots of decisions to be made. But certainly, we open up lots of possibilities for funding and opportunities for collaboration if we go ahead and end the intergovernmental agreement and look at opportunities for this in the future.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I agree with my two fellow commissioners. And just for the sake, I know we talked about this at the last meeting, but for the sake of people who weren't here, either Jim or Rachel, can you give us a sense of what the change in the estimate of what our cost as a village would be from when we first, you know, started talking about this grant to now? Because I think that is an important consideration.
As far as, sorry, as far as construction costs over the last five years, we've all seen large increases, as everybody else has in all their typical bills. You know, I mean, we're probably 30% higher than we were five years ago, somewhere in that range. You know, we did look at the cost of a path on the west side versus the east side, and the east side has some lighting relocation, along with the ComEd, the lighting we control, so we can control the timeline with that. But, so, they're comparable in cost. The cost on the west side might be a little bit less because there's less utility conflicts that we're aware of at this point. Does that answer your question, or is it...
I meant the overall change. So initially, we said, okay, the village is gonna be, you know, sort of on the hook for this much. But now, all these years later, it was considerably higher. I don't have those numbers on me, but if either of you do, just as a reminder.
As far as, like, the Invest in Cook grant, it was $247,500, which at the time was 50% of the construction cost.
Okay.
There are other grants that are out there. I think, I would recommend that we would pursue Invest in Cook for detailed design if we decide to move to a different location, and then pursue ITAP or IDNR, something that would have, like, an 80/20 split for construction, right? So two different grants to get that project done.
Can I just add that if we're gonna be exploring getting the bike path moved to the west boundary, we're gonna need to engage with the Altenheim, because a recreational component is not included in the restrictive covenants, and we would need their express consent. I'm not gonna speculate on how they would respond to people biking through their property. It does directly, you know, one of the requests for the original path was an eight-foot privacy fence during the linear feet of the Altenheim property. And we had, we had at least offered to incorporate that into the design.
So staff, we can make a note to reach out to the Altenheim Board for their input before we move forward.
So, Mayor and Commissioners, I just want to clarify, because we do need to make a decision on the, on the IGA. Are we good with staff moving forward with ending the IGA? Or do you need more information? So I'm hearing that we should go ahead and forego the IGA that we have right now for the bike path, with the idea that, you know, we'll consult with the Altenheim to see if there is any, if they have any issues with potentially, in the future, putting a bike path on the west side of the, of the property. And then from there, we would move forward with potentially applying for another Invest in Cook grant at that point, potentially. Does that sound about right?
That's what I hear us saying.
Okay. Thank you. So, related to some of the issues that we've had with the bike path is, we still have the outstanding issue of burying the ComEd utilities on the east side. So I'm gonna defer now to Jim and Steve on this. ComEd is still interested in burying the utilities adjacent to Van Buren. The village would need to acquire the easements for this project. Potentially, land acquisition for this could be a part of the proposed Altenheim buyback. I will say, you know, I've talked with Steve and Jim about this. Our recommendation would be to still proceed with land acquisition for the easements provided to ComEd, but I'll defer to the two of them to discuss that a little bit more.
So the two important elements here is that the engineering is completed, and that was completed on ComEd's dime. And they have, through their franchise agreement, the requirement that they bury, I believe it's 500 linear feet of overhead wire at the village's request. To the best of my knowledge, we've never asked. This was like pulling hen's teeth and getting them to cooperate with this. As a, as a matter of looking at the Van Buren corridor in a broader context than just Altenheim, you know, go back 35 years, where Abilhau Crane was there, where that entire east side was entirely light industrial. It's now residential, so we need to look at the aesthetics. And frankly, having the overhead lines buried, it improves the aesthetic. It makes the property safer from power outages due to, you know, trees hitting wires. And I believe, Nick, if you'll, you know, opine, the only cost to the village would be the drafting of the easement.
Well, it would be the drafting of the easement, but are we gonna need to acquire the easement from the underlying property owner?
No, it's, it's, well, Jim, I...
I'm not, I'm not...
Well, the franchise agreement was in, is in our name. Altenheim's not named in the franchise agreement. So if we do end up having the smaller, I believe it's the Area A, sellback, you know, we could do a land swap. It's 20 linear feet by about 300, 300 feet.
Steve, I think the point there is drafting easements is not the big issue. It's what's the property interest required to actually bury the lines. If they're not going in the right of way, you need a private interest, right?
Right.
So...
Sorry. The way I read it was that we, it was gonna be part of a property swap.
Okay. That can be done.
But the question was, is there another cost? There may be.
Right.
So whether it's a property swap, whether it's a land acquisition, whether there's acquiring an easement, there's more to it than just an easement.
Yeah.
So in this, in this document, is this the one that describes all the parcels? It says it was put together by Sebel. And what it says in here, just, it says, "Under the current franchise agreement with ComEd, the village must have ownership in order to proceed with the burial of the terminal overhead wires." And my question that I had had on my own was, is ownership of and an easement to use the same thing? And I, I'm not a lawyer, I can't answer that.
It's for the utilities.
But do we also have to have, because here it says, "We have to have ownership in order to proceed with the burial."
Correct. You would need ownership of the easement area in order to provide the area for ComEd to bury the line.
Yep.
Purchase, exchange, there are lots of options. Or you can go in the right of way, but I don't know if that was ever an option.
So the line was, the ComEd burial was supposed to be outside of the right of way because it didn't want, ComEd didn't want to be underneath our path. And they also had to have a on-the-ground transformer there. So if the path disappears, we could revisit the exact location of where the ComEd utility gets undergrounded.
This is my question.
Got it.
That hasn't been anything that we've considered yet.
Got it.
So the bigger question is whether or not the council wants staff to move forward with continuing discussions with ComEd to bury the lines. You know, should that be the case, then we have two options. We can, you know, forego the ability of putting a bike path on the east, essentially the east side of the property, west of Van Buren. Or we could entertain this proposal that, you know, was made to, you know, there's a couple different ways that we can acquire the land to, from the Altenheim in order to put the easement back on village-owned property. So one, we just need, staff wants direction as to whether the council wants to continue considering the idea of burying the ComEd lines. And then from there, we can come back to the council with what the options are, as far as, you know, the cost that it would entail to draft the language needed to bury the lines underneath what was, what is now our current property and was going to be the bike path. Or if we want to move it or need to move it and need to acquire property from the Altenheim, we'd be able to provide that information at a future date.
I have a couple questions. I didn't quite catch why these needed to be buried? Like, why did...
There was a, sorry, there was a direct conflict with the poles being in the path.
Okay. They don't need to be buried. They were just going to be buried because a bike path was going in there.
Yeah, the bike path was gonna have a direct conflict, so we had asked ComEd to move their poles. The location that they had identified would have been further west of the existing right of way, which triggered...
Because they would have had to go on the other side of the bike path, essentially.
Yes.
So it's, there's not a requirement or a necessity, if we're not putting the bike path there, to bury it, but the opportunity to have ComEd pay to bury the lines is here. And so that is, that's kind of what we're asking the council, if they want us to proceed with being able to have ComEd bury the utilities. You know, we're an older community, so all of our utilities are above ground. As you, you know, as you see newer communities being built, you don't see as many utility poles. They're burying them underground. So we have an opportunity here, especially with a potential for development in that area to bury these utilities that are along Van Buren. And so that's where we're looking for direction from the council as to what you desire for the existing utilities that are there now.
Would this be something, you know, better planned for if, like, to happen at the same time if there was development happening at, like, the Altenheim? Like, is there an urgency to do something like this now? Is there a, is there a window, a timeline?
The consideration is simply that we have, we have been talking with ComEd at this moment. I mean, we can certainly reach out to ComEd to see if it's something that they would be willing to extend. I believe that the contract that was given to you was dated in 2023.
I guess because, even if we were to pursue this, I would, they would have to potentially redesign, because they don't need to go that far west anymore. Like, it would make more sense to put it, what, in the right of way, you were saying?
In the right of way or closer to the right of way.
Yeah.
And we can work on that, prior to that, if that's what the council wants us to do, since we don't have to purchase or acquire land.
Right.
Because we're not putting the bike path. And so, given that ComEd has been in communication with us, I mean, on a monthly basis, I think we get an email from ComEd asking if we've acquired, you know, the easement. asking if we've acquired, you know, the, the easements that we need in order for them to move forward with their portion of the project. And so now that we're not, you know, moving forward with a bike path on the east side of the property, that's kind of where, that's kind of the outstanding question is, do we still want to move forward with burying, burying the utility so that that, that is done? Again, it's not a, it's not a requirement. It's not necessarily necessary, but it is an option that we have at this moment.
Since the engineers, engineering is completed, staff's recommendation is we continue looking at this for the full 20 feet and not just 10 feet for the utilities. That would ultimately end up closing the door for another potential future use for that parcel, that 10 foot parcel. Could be a bike path, could be a walking path. We don't want to go back to plan A and say we should have bought A and B. So staff advocates for any land swap to continue the full 20 foot by 300 foot.
I'm just, I'm, I'm going to go back to the burying the ComEd utilities for a second because I'm, so I can see the value of it, burying the, the utilities if it's something that ComEd is paying for, which is what I'm hearing. And I see the value of using la, land that the village owns, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an additional compli, I'm, I'm using the word complication, but I'm not, you know, to, to simplify to say, okay, that, you know, we own the, the land where the bike path was going. It, you know, especially if there is a, you know, it, it would improve the consumer's use for like easier, you know, less likely for power outages, you know, et cetera. Especially if there's, depending on the future use of any, anything we decide to do. You know, we're minimizing the cost to the village. We're using the existing expense of engineering that's already occurred. I'm coming to this newer than most, but with regard to that particular aspect of a decision, I, you know, seems pretty straightforward. In terms of the length of how, you know, it seems like, you know, we're already
So one of the things we can also do is we can work to bury the utilities under the village owned land now. And I mean, you can make a decision on, you know, the staff recommendation to purchase the additional land for, you know, whether it's for a walking path at a later time. They don't have to be, they don't have to go hand in hand. I mean, there, there would be two separate transactions. We can certainly move forward with burying the common utilities under, you know, the description that you stated, using the, the land that we already own and using the funds that ComEd, you know, is willing to dedicate to us. And then at a later time, when we start talking about
Unless there, yeah, unless there's some, something I'm not aware of.
Yeah.
I mean, this is something that, you know, there's a couple of different moving pieces here that I don't feel like I know all the, all the
Correct. So to, so the, to make it as basic as we can, the, the simplest option is to use the, the easement that we already have.
Yeah.
You know, work with ComEd to bury those. And in, in that case, then the cost to the village would be the legal drafting fees to make sure that, you know, we've got all the paperwork in order. And obviously that would all come in front of the council before, you know, we move forward with it all. But as far as, you know, any additional recommendations from staff, that can all take part of the discussion of the larger piece of the Altenheim. You know, we've got a proposal from the Altenheim proper. And so that, that can be a separate conversation. They don't have to be one in the same.
So the question is, if we did that, are we foregoing anything? I mean, is that, is that something where we could do that and then keep other options open?
Steve and I were kind of discussing, well, if you do put the ComEd lines within the village right of way, then it kind of precludes putting a sidewalk there because not only are you burying the lines, but there's also a transformer that would go there.
Okay.
Right, so that's
Well, that's, so then
Yeah, so that might be something that's being missed in, in the conversation.
Okay.
That, that, there will be an apartment sticking above ground that would be shielded no matter where it goes, but
So then it's a good idea.
You would have to jog a future path or sidewalk around it. So in an ideal world, if there's a consideration to put something that's wider or a sidewalk there, it would be nice to still have ComEd as far away from
Okay.
the right of way as possible, or in the original location.
So then, so then I think we need to see an idea of so that I think I need, I need more information about where the best place is.
Okay, we can do that. Staff can certainly work to get more information in regards to, in regard to that and you know, we can bring this to, back to the council for, for consideration and direction.
Yeah, but I think it makes sense to utilize, minimize the cost to the village, utilize the resources that are available. And, and work with ComEd within the, you know, with, since they seem to be ready to go. I mean, does that but certainly you all know better.
Yeah, and I think as long as we are, as we continue to move along with these conversations in regards to the Altenheim, you know, and we can, we can relay to ComEd that we're continuing to work on, you know, these potential easements. You know, they'll continue to work with us.
And certainly we want Commissioner Nero's input as well.
Okay. All right. So we will work to get a little bit more clear information to the council as to what land we would need to acquire in order to make this
Okay.
Be able to build any sidewalks that we needed and any of that.
I would like to see how it fits in the village owned property.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm curious, how, how much would it cost? You know, if we didn't have ComEd doing this for us to bury all these utilities, what kind of, you know, number would that be? You know, let's say we did decide to wait. It's expensive? Why, why are they doing it for free? I'm not, not to look a gift horse in the mouth, but Okay.
Thank you for that perspective. It's helpful. You know, to know what could go there.
Okay, so staff will work on getting that information for the council. Okay, so the next thing that we need to start talking about is the Altenheim, Altenheim proper. You know, I want to make sure that, I'm going to try to refer to the land that the village owns as the village owned Altenheim property. And, you know, Altenheim proper will be the the senior living facility. They've, they've made a proposal to the council in the past, and so we really haven't had any discussion collectively as to, you know, what the council wants to do with that. So part of the proposal that they have made is they would like to create a buffer around the buildings that are currently there. They, they know that the potential for development in the village owned property is there. And especially with the buildings now having been demolished. And they have an open line site to the remaining portion of the property. They would like to create a buffer so that they know exactly how much land they have between, you know, their property line and where development could start. Because the village would be selling back land to the Altenheim, that needs to be discussed. That portion, it has, needs to be discussed, a majority of it in open session. So we can discuss the purchase price in closed session. And there's some very small other things that we can talk about in closed session, but you know, when it comes to real estate and the selling of property, it needs to, majority of it needs to be done in open session. And so I would really just kind of like to, you know, start the discussion is to if the council is one, interested in selling back any of the land back to the Altenheim. And two, you know, we need to determine how much of it we would like to sell back. They did make two proposals. There is the buffer around the, the buildings, and then there's also a side portion. I think in the drawings, we referred to them as, as parcel A and parcel B. Parcel A is the most important portion to them because that creates the buffer around their buildings. Parcel B is something that, you know, they could utilize in the future. And they said if the village was willing to sell it to them, they would be up for entertaining that. But I think before we can enter in, into any discussion with, you know, development of the remaining portion of it, it would probably be in our best interest to determine if there is a portion that we're willing to sell, sell back to the Altenheim. So that then, you know, we would all know exactly what portion of the property could be developed.
Well, I think it's definitely reasonable to consider selling back a portion. The way the property lines exist at this time, a few of them are right up to the Altenheim buildings. So it makes sense for them to want a little bit of buffer back, especially in those really tight spots. I personally would recommend that, I can't take my glasses off, area B. That's kind of off the table for me. We don't know what kind of development is going to be happening in the in any of it yet. And I think that could still be very valuable to potential developers or to green space or a bike path or, or what have you. So I'm open to continuing a discussion about what that buffer looks like. I will say, you know, their proposal for area A, I would want to make some tweaks with that. I don't think it's in the village's best interest to close off completely our access to the north parcel and to Madison on the west side there. I would want to keep as much of that open and available and connecting at this time, especially since we don't know what we're going, you know, what is going in there. I'm interested in hearing whatever other folks have to say, but that's sort of my opinion at this time.
I'm gonna agree with, I would not be comfortable at this point selling, I also take my glasses off, area B, because I think, you know, that could potentially be something that would be developable and I would want to allow us more of a chance to, to think about what might go there and what might be there. But I do want to be a super good partner to the Altenheim home and make sure that they do have access. You know, they talked about, you know, for improvements and stuff like that, it's impossible to even put up a, a ladder, you know, without encroaching on property that's not theirs. And I, you know, I think it just makes sense that they have more, more space available to them. Yeah, yeah. So I think that's what I have to say for now.
Yeah, my, my comments are pretty straightforward. I, I do think that area A is, where the, the buffer for the Altenheim is important to make available to them. And I do want to make sure that we have a good relationship with the Altenheim and they, they have I really appreciate staff and, and and the, and the residents and, and all the work that has taken place so far with my colleagues on the council to to look at this and, and to just, you know, as we explore the opportunities for the Altenheim to make sure that we are continually, continuing to be good neighbors. And, but I think Commissioner Voges pointing out the, the, the path or the connecting between parcels and the access to Madison Street. And again, not knowing exactly what we envision yet, or talking about the possibilities. We need to keep that in the conversation. We also yay. Thank you. Thank you for helping us envision. Yeah. Sorry, we got all wrapped up. So we want to make sure that in continuing to be good neighbors with the Altenheim, that we understand how people are going to move throughout the space. And and I, you know, I think, yeah, we can wait on, on the second area, the area B as we see what's possible for the
So on this, on this
Rachel will explain.
Yeah, on this map here, so the, the pink portion at the bottom here is the, the is kind of the we drew the lines to kind of make it clear. So this is the Altenheim here, and this doesn't, this, this map doesn't show the buffer. This shows, this is the, the Grove area up here. This is, this is a combination of A and B. So this include, this gray area here includes the portion squared off to the Altenheim. That would be, you know, A would come around here and I think they were looking at, it was about 20 feet around. Cause this, yeah. And then, do you have that one? Okay. Yeah, we'll swap it out. We're going to swap this one out so that we can show what the
We've all looked at lots of maps too.
Okay, so just so everybody has an idea. So this, these are the Altenheim buildings here. Okay, this is kind of the big area that is, we use, it's the field area that's over at the Altenheim. So what the Altenheim has proposed to the village, so right now the, the village owns all of this land, which was that gray area in the last map that I just showed you. So area A, parcel A that they are proposing is pushing this lot line to here, okay? And in this area, there's like a 24, 25 foot buffer here, 25 foot buffer here. Obviously it gets a little bit bigger here and here. This would allow them to have this buffer line here, which then would prevent any type of development from going past this line here. Area B is everything that is to the west of the Altenheim. So if you were to drive through the Altenheim right now, the village has it, it's really just kind of like a little wooded area. There's, there's not really much to it. They were looking at it for one, it could be some passive recreation. It could be additional parking for any projects that they do in the future. This is the section that, this was the portion that they did not necessarily need to purchase now. And if the village wasn't willing to sell to them, they wouldn't, it it was just an option that they threw out there. But ideally, before the village moved forward with any type of development, they would like to purchase area A, which is this area here.
It, it's important to note also that areas F and G, as the late players to the game, the proposed site for the, the reservoir, took about one and a half acres off of our sellable property. If we retained area B to the west of the properties, it, it has, it definitely has development potential. It's probably some access issues, but that sort of offsets the loss of areas F and areas G.
Just for the record, areas F and area G are where council gave direction to put the water reservoirs. So
That's, that's what Director Glinky is That's, that's what Director Glinky is referring to at the bottom, the yellow and the green at the bottom. That's that section that we had had the water reservoir meeting uh, for and direction was given to start looking at what it would entail to put our new two million gallon water reservoirs in this area.
So it sounds like the council's okay with um, possibly selling A, but holding off on B.
I just want to be clear, I'm interested in having the discussion about them buying back some sort of buffer, but I am not okay with A as it's drawn. So I would want that to be amended to keep that connection to our front parcel and to Madison. I'm not going to draw it. I understand why people like clean lines and, and that sort of thing, but I, I don't think, um, it's in the best interest of the village to sever um, our front north access from our south access at this time. So I'm very open to the discussion of figuring out where they can get that buffer back, but I'd like to see um, a different proposal on what that actually is.
All right. So I think that's the direction we want to go in. Um, continue discussions with the Altenheim. Um, I know the representatives are here. I see them taking notes. Would you like to be heard? Do you want to say anything? I understand.
Okay, we will uh, certainly connect with the Altenheim in regards to that and uh, we'll be coming back to the council with more information in regards to area A. Um, and we will take B off the table. Temporarily, yes, for the time being. Okay, um, one of the other things that came up during discussion, uh, that I wanted to just make sure that we had a discussion about was the demolition grant requirements. When we talk about the future of the Altenheim, uh, just wanted to make it, bring a reminder that the grant application uh, for the demolition portion of the grant had in there that the village planned for mixed use, commercial and residential. So, um, I think I provided that document to you all. Uh, so when we, you know, get into a broader conversation about it, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that. I did also provide the Altenheim Advisory Committee recommendations. Um, I do, I do realize that over twenty-some years, there have been multiple uh, groups that have taken a look at the Altenheim. Um, this most recent group met in twenty twenty-three. You know, there's a, there's a lot of things that have to be considered as we, as we start moving forward with uh, the discussion of what should come of the, of the open land there. We're gonna have to decide on what the council's vision for the property is. Um, we're gonna have to decide how much of the land, you know, the village wants to sell uh, to a developer. Um, we're gonna have to decide if we want to do this on our, on our own, or if we want a consultant to walk us through, you know, what this looks like. Uh, we're gonna have to decide if we want to, you know, put out an RFP, a request for proposals, um, or if we have a vision, do we want to do a request for qualifications? An RFQ. So I kind of just wanted to open the discussion, you know, about this and start getting, you know, your thoughts on, on this process. I mean, certainly, you know, this is a process that is going to take several meetings. Nothing is going to be, you know, decided tonight, um, by any means. But the conversations are important, um, and the conversations are important that we have them together. So, um, again, you know, reiterating the fact that because we are selling land, uh, the rules for a closed session are different. And so, um, just want to give everybody the opportunity to kind of, I guess, have staff listen to kind of what your ideas are, what your thoughts are, so that we can start putting together a plan to move forward with this. You know, I, I don't want to, I don't think anybody wants to sit here, talk about this and then wait six months to come back to the table. Uh, and so any information that staff can get from the council um, and that you guys can share with each other would help us in developing a plan on how to move forward. There's gonna be changes, I'm sure, along the way, you know, a suggestion that's made here tonight may not be the best path that we move forward with the next time we meet. Um, but I, I, it would really help, um, if we could all kind of converse about, you know, maybe what we, what we see for the, for the Altenheim and what, what that vision looks like. Sure.
I just have a question, since you brought up the, um, the grant, uh, the description of the grant and sort of what we, I don't know, locked ourselves into a little bit. Um, and it does say, um, that once the demolition is complete, we must prepare the site for a future mixed use that will consist of residential, commercial and green space. Um, and I think, you know, we've known that for a while and I think it's pretty obvious that there's gonna be residential and it's pretty obvious that there's gonna be green space. But everything I've heard or, you know, most things that have been recommended, talk very little about commercial and whether that would even be a successful venture there. I'm wondering how beholden to this we are, you know? What happens if, let's say we develop and there is no commercial in there, you know? Are we gonna get in trouble? Are we gonna pay a fine? Like, what are the legal implications of that? And then how, how strictly do we have to follow this?
Uh, Nick, she said the legal term, so I'll defer to you.
Do you want me to speak for the state of Illinois?
Does anyone have any ideas? How, how do we address that?
Well, I mean, if you're gonna need the grant interpreted, you gotta go visit the grant administrator to find out what their position might be on something like that. But it, I don't have it in front of me, but at the language I think I just heard was, put it in a position? Is that what I heard?
Says, once the demolition is completed, the grantee will prepare the site for a future mixed use that will consist of residential, commercial and green space to be paid via other funding sources.
Yeah, it, I'm not hearing that it must be used for those uses. It just is future. So I, you know, I'm, again, I want to speak for the state, but if you're, you've used the grant funds for the purpose of demolishing it, to put it into that position, I think if the market comes to you with a different use, I suppose, you know, without a commercial, which is what I'm hearing is probably the case, I don't know if that's a problem, but that's a state issue. So. And the point is, I'm not hearing there's a mandate that there must be commercial. Let's put it that way.
Other, I guess, le- legal question that I sort of want to get out of the way before we talk about any ideas. And um, I know that the people who could answer this are sitting here in the room and may or may not choose to. Um, there's been sort of different things I've heard from them about whether or not there would be concessions that could potentially be made in terms of um, their own restrictions that they have. And um, I, that limits us a lot if concessions aren't made because then we have to withhold ourselves to, you know, much lower density. Um, and then that leads to other questions. So I'm wondering if that's something that we have plans to address or if that would come up. Once, early in the process of having a developer approach us or a developer that we've decided to work with, and then we get everybody involved to talk about that. I guess I don't really know what the process for that is moving forward.
I guess anecdotally, I, I would like to point out to YMCA is an example of how that worked last time. I mean, when we did this last time, and of course it didn't go forward, you know, all the stakeholders were at the table at that time to have that conversation. I don't know if you can have it unilaterally without a potential developer, the Altenheim uh, folks, uh, and the village, obviously. So, at least that's how it worked last time. But I think everyone's gonna have to have, you know, some stake in that discussion. At least, that's my opinion.
If I could, yeah. I think that's always been sort of a tricky thing and I think that's held up a lot of sort of the visioning process because, you know, oh, but traffic, oh, but, you know, the, the Altenheim sales contract or restrictions and all of these different things. And um, you know, in my conversations with you all, like, you sound open to maybe a good idea, even if it doesn't quite fit within, you know, the, the restrictions. And I think we've all made an effort to be, you know, partners with the community and, and with our neighbors and want to do something that, um, is good, you know, where we are good neighbors, where it is, you know, most impactful for the community, um, especially since it's taken so long. Like, you don't want to just see it thrown away to, to something to, to say we got it done. But I do think it could be helpful for us to sort of throw all of those restrictions and, and things out the window and just talk about what do we think could be, not just cool there, like, oh, I want whatever, but I think this could be, you know, really great for the community and could be, um, perfect in that space and not limit ourselves and just see like what those visions are. And I would imagine we can start, you know, whittling them down into something that really makes a lot of sense for Forest Park. Um, that would include obviously community input and feedback, but like, we should just start and throw things out there. I'm sad Ryan's not here. But, you know, let's just start throwing some things out there and that at least can help, I think, staff just figure out which direction to start going to explore what these options are for us. You know, we've seen some really great proposals from all of the um, different committees and, and boards over the years. And I really appreciate them, you know, spending their time and, and sharing their great ideas with us. And I think we can take a lot of that and build on that. And some of it's been really fun, you know, we realized pretty quickly, like, the mini Ravinia is not gonna work. But even that plan got dialed back and it started to look like a really, like, cool park-like space that could have farmer's markets and, and all of that stuff. So it's like, that could be, that could be really amazing. I understand that we might need to work in some commercials, some housing, some, some green space, just because we have to generate revenue. Um, but I want us to think about that in the most thoughtful way possible. Um, you know, my fear is if we're just putting some houses in there and put a park in the middle, that really just starts to feel like it's for those houses. It doesn't feel like it's for the whole community. Um, so in talking about what, you know, these future designs look like, I want to keep something like that, um, in front of mind. You know, my pie in the sky, like, would this even work, that I've talked to a lot of you about, um, is sort of, uh, we're seeing them pop up a- all over the country, but um, sort of that mixed use space that has, um, it has some shops, it has some, you know, anchor stores. Um, it's got a theater. It's more of a public-private partnership that also has some, uh, residential. There might be some condos and apartments. Um, and something like that, you're sort of baking in this little community that has, you know, some shopping. It's got a, a wine bar. It's got a little grocery store. It's got, um, you know, if the Prairie Path is extended, um, it could have, you know, a, a bike shop or something like that. Something that's really curated to the community. Um, the community center could be there or it could have maybe a wing there where, um, we're having sort of these multi-generational um, events where the kids are playing with the folks from, you know, the Altenheim or whatever. Just thinking about something big that's incorporating the community, that's bringing, um, more residents to, to come and live in Forest Park. And it's a place where, you know, folks on that side don't necessarily have a lot of access, um, right there to like a grocery store or something like that. So to have these places that folks can come in, they can grab a sandwich, they can go sit in the park that's there and have it and then, you know, hop on the train or their bike down the Prairie Pa- Prairie Path. I think something like that's kind of exciting to talk about. Is it feasible? You know, I don't know. And I think, um, I would be interested in exploring it and I'm really excited to hear other people's ideas, but, you know, that's like my big one.
Well, that, that is in direct conflict with the restrictive covenants, that particular use. So that would have to be. Well, I, you know, there's also a letter from their uh, legal counsel stating that the Altenheim board is uh, not interested in eliminating those, but they are open to a discussion of something like a multifamily development, which would be R3.
Commissioners, uh, several months ago, um, we pulled, uh, just a garden variety sample RFP off of a website. And I asked the village administrator to share it with commissioners. Not with the thought of entering into any kind of agreement, you know, the next month or the next two months, but simply, um, to educate us on, on what went in to issue an RFP. Um, no one at this day us, other than the attorney, um, has worked with an RFP for a potential development project like this. When we first went to the state and asked them, um, for the money to demolish the buildings, Commissioner Vog and I, I certainly envisioned some kind of transit-oriented development, right? Not necessarily shopping, but living spaces. In the last year or so, the state has considered, uh, legislation to merge the transit agencies. And as part of that comprehensive bill, um, you know, there's language about encouraging transit-oriented development. In the six years I've been the mayor, served as mayor, I've had any number of developers approach me about the Altenheim. Not necessarily with concrete proposals, but just with an interest to develop. I pretty much always tell them, you know, go talk to the building department. I don't want to hear it. But here we are, you know, in the public, four fifths of the council together. We have all the documents in front of us. And so I think we should engage in the discussion about whether it's time to issue some kind of RFP. Look at what would go into an RFP. And then test the market, right? See what developers would like to build in Forest Park. The mere fact that we would issue an RFP, um, doesn't bind us to accept any proposal. There's a lot that would go into it. But until we decide as a group to make a serious effort to explore what can go into this, this property, uh, it could be something really great for Forest Park. Certainly housing, I think would go, would, would be a big part of it, but we know we have fiscal challenges in the village as well. And so I think we should have a discussion about an RFP. How much property, um, could potentially be sold? Potential values that we could recoup. And then, of course, we should work with the Altenheim itself, our partners, uh, to see what makes sense. I've, I already heard R3. But that's where I think, um, our dis- our energy should be focused at this point. So I'll just stop there.
I want to say first, I want to respond to Jessica. Um, I love the idea of the public market. I mean, we've talked about this, you know, a long time ago. Do I think it's feasible? Probably not. And that makes me really, really sad. Um, I was, I was asked to be a, um, a judge at a tomato contest this weekend at the community gardens here in Forest Park. And the gardens are so beautifully maintained and it was like little kids like running through the gardens, you know, and the adults, you know, tending to the gardens. And it was this wonderful, like, match of different ages and people. And I thought, my God, this is so beautiful. And why can't we do this like bigger and somewhere else? And it, I like the idea. I like the idea of a space and people could have their weddings there, you know, all this kind of, you know, shops and stuff. I'm not sure and I could be wrong. I don't know if there's a market for that, you know? I think when we've talked about it in the past with Muse and other people, you know, the idea sounds great, but, um, fine. And again, I'm not an expert. I, I don't think it makes sense financially, but I love that idea. It delights me in my head every time I think about it. I, I think from my point of view, it's probably gonna, what I would like to see there and what I think is gonna be the best use for the space is gonna be residential, which, um, can be very beautiful. Residential doesn't mean, you know, it's gonna be some kind of like ugly industrial building. Um, and then green space. And the question is, what is that balance gonna be? And then for me, the other question is, um, can we afford to do it at like an R1 or R2 density? Because if we're not bringing in enough money in property taxes over the long run and all we're counting on is the initial sale, maybe it's not worth it. And so, you know, you know, what, do we plop down two houses and say, you know, okay, we developed it and walk away? That doesn't make a lot of sense. And so one of the things that I would like to see from developers, if we do an RFP or, or an RFQ is, could they put together, you know, some sort of, um, you know, based on typical, you know, uh, property taxes, what would we be looking at over the next ten years, you know, annually? And then, you know, as a composite and then, you know, add that to the sale price. to the sale price? I think, you know, the financial aspect has to go hand in hand with our pie in the sky ideas of what we'd like to see. So for me, that's something I would really like to see when we, early on, when we start talking about development, is what are we looking at now from selling? And what are we looking at over the next few years? Because I think that's an important component, as far as I'm concerned.
The value of the land is directly tied to the product that's put on it. So doing homes and doing potentially age-in-place one-story rentals for seniors does affect the value of the land. Multifamily is what you're going to get your best dollar per square foot. And I think, you know, going back to the mayor's comment about an RFP, I'd like to ask the council to consider an RFQ instead. RFPs, you know, they're pretty pieces of paper that cost tens of thousands of dollars to put together, but they're another person's vision. If we do an RFQ and we find a qualified buyer, one of the qualified buyers, you know, one of those qualifications is, you know, they're either self-funded or they have the liquidity to build. Construction loans are very difficult right now. And once we select the winner of the, or the partner that we want from the RFQ, then from the ground floor, the three people with skin in the game, Altenheim, the village, will be able to collaborate upfront in the design phase, okay? And the whole idea of that is to get a package going through entitlement that, A, we're confident is going to be able to, we're going to be able to sell to the community, and then control those wild cards, those self-imposed limitations. Number one complaint from residents of the Grove is the backup on, is getting in and getting out. Getting in's a little easier, you have two options. Getting out is not. And, you know, whoever develops this land is going to have to come up with a robust traffic study to show how traffic is, you know, we can't just ask iDOT to put hashtags through the drive there, because at peak, they block the fire trucks out on Displanes. So it's too close to Jackson to be signalized. You know, I'd leave that up to the, you know, to the developer to work out, and they're traffic experts. But I think an RFQ is probably a shorter path to finding a dependable, funded developer that we can partner with from the ground up.
Okay, so just, I just want to make sure I understand the difference between RFP and RFQ. RFP, they kind of come out and say, here's our plan, this is what we want to do. But the RFQ, they say, we meet the financial qualifications, we can check their, like, funding to make sure they actually have it in place. And then we can sit down with them and talk about what our ideas are, and maybe the PZC meets too. Is that kind of like...
What are the standard elements of an RFQ?
Well, the RFQ is only going to get you so far, is the issue, though. I mean, you may be presented with qualified developers who are going to tell you they've got the ability to take on a development project like this. But to Steve's point, an RFP is going to require a lot of money, you know, plans. You could get through an RFQ process, pick a developer, and not find out you like what they're doing, and you're going to the RFQ all over again, or the RFP. So, you know, it's a tough market, and I'll stand to be corrected by people who know this area better, but, you know, it's a tough market to get someone involved in an RFQ at this point in time, and find out whether you're going to waste time and then go to an RFP or to bring somebody through. You can do an RFQ, settle on a developer that you like, and then you're going to spend a lot of time and money with them getting plans. So the RFQ just tells you, you know, they're funded. You know, they've done projects like this before, they can show you all the pretty pictures of the things they've done in the past, the financial commitments and ability they have to do something that maybe is what you want, but you don't know what they're going to show you until you pick them.
So my understanding of the difference between an RFP and RFQ is, the council had a vision for what they wanted, you know, whether it was, you know, a broader vision, but knew that they wanted something specific there. You would want to go for an RFQ. You'd want to find somebody who could make that vision happen, and you would still be involved in kind of planning the details of it, but you have something in mind. If you are looking for ideas as to, you know, what the market would put out there without having to necessarily do a market study, you're open to hearing what people, you know, you want to say, we're going to put 3.5 acres up, or whatever it is, and you want to hear what people, what developers could do with that, then you would want to do an RFP, because then they're coming to you with their proposals as to, you know, this and that. If you go with the RFP and they come back with a plan that you like, you still have the opportunity to work with them within that proposal. It's not just, you know, here's my plan and it's this or nothing. But at least, you know, in that sense, you would get ideas. And it might not be just something residential, somebody to Commissioner Vogt's, you know, credit and discussion. Somebody may come up with something that we haven't thought of here. And so those are just some of the things to consider, you know, when you're looking at whether you want to do an RFP or an RFQ.
One thing I'd add, the mayor pointed out, you know, when you do an RFP, embedded in that is an RFQ. I mean, it's going to be a developer who you're going to set the qualifications for, just like you would with an RFQ. So you're going to kind of get the blended, the best of both worlds if you do an RFP, at least in that regard. It's not going to stop you from getting somebody who doesn't know what they're doing or has never done a project, but at least you can put the qualifications, it'll set the metric for that. RFP also, at least in my experience, is reflective of the market. One thing I've learned over the years, the market's going to tell you what can go there today. You know, you may have a vision, that's why you do an RFQ, but, you know, the market today may not even be the market next year. So just, an RFP may give you the best product that can actually be built. You know, you don't have to agree with it, but at least it'll tell you what the snapshot is at this point.
Either way, we're going to have to settle on a consultant to develop the...
Once you get to the point where you've got an RFP and you've got some direction, that's another conversation about consultants in terms of economic value, you know, planning consultant. I mean, that's, yes, there's a bigger conversation for those.
Wouldn't we need a consultant to draft the RFP?
I mean, the village has a planning consultant now, I think, don't they? I mean, the RFP can be as broad and as you want it to be. I'm not too sure you would need, unless you're going to try and dictate what it's going to be, I'm not too sure you would need a consultant upfront to do your RFP.
Okay, but we are certainly going to need a consultant to help us digest the material.
Probably, yes. I mean, if you remember, we had the NYMCA, we had a consultant. It just, it just helped staff and the elected officials.
If I could just interject for a minute, because I haven't been able to share my perspective on what I'd like to see. And as I've digested the work that's been done by our citizen commissions and the talking to residents and my colleagues, I just wanted to also reinforce what the mayor has said about transit-oriented developments. There's a lot of grant funding that's available and planning in the next three to five years about, as the state and regional authorities are looking at how our transit systems are going to be reorganized, there's a lot of work being done on, you know, how our transit system is going to be used. They're looking at the space at the transit sites, at our hubs, and how those communities around them are being used, and how to reinvigorate and how to activate communities. And I have been looking at ideas for the Altenheim and the work that's being done and the work that has been done in that light. And the themes that I've seen come out from the work that has been done is, you know, mixed-use development. And as Director Glinky has said, the multifamily residence is the future of where we're headed. And, but also definitely hearing from residents, the idea of having community green space available, that is something that the community can use and benefit from. So I definitely want to be able to see that happen as part of the future use. And in that mixed-use, multifamily development, whatever it ends up being, you know, having small retail that serves a community hub type of space. And again, and I think we've all had, we picked up on this, that, and our experts here have said the same thing, we're going to put out a call for proposals, and the market is going to help us see what can happen. And then we get to respond and say, this fits our vision, this fits the requirements, and this fits Forest Park. And that's the perspective that I'm taking to it, with a responsibility to say, a lot of community time and effort, a lot of expert time and effort has been invested in how we should use this space responsibly and for the village's finances and for the village's future. I'm not a great person at sort of looking at a space and saying, this is what should go here. But I am a good person at amalgamating the information that I've been given. And so I'm hearing those themes come across. And I have a bit of an open mind, but I do want to see that. But I do see definitely a future in transit-oriented development and making sure that at least part of how we use the Altenheim space helps to engage and take advantage of public money that will be available in the future, I think, or philanthropy that will be available in the future. I would also support articulating what we've said in a RFP, to ask for developers to say, you know, give us ideas about how they would use, or how the space could be used. I think anyone who's, and this is my preference, I think anyone who's come forward with interest in the Altenheim, I would, I want to make sure that everybody who's interested in the Altenheim participate in that process, and that we consider that process. Everybody goes through the same process.
At what point do we address, you touched on it briefly, the traffic concerns? You're like, I feel like every time we talk about development, we're like, oh, we'll worry about the, you know, traffic when we come to it. And then part of me worries, maybe this is my naivete, that, you know, we'll have some great development come along, and then we aren't able to change traffic patterns or make it easier, you know, along...
That's all going to occur during due diligence and entitlement. I mean, they're going to have to come up with a solution. We don't, at this point, have a suggestion. I think they could re-engineer the CTA opening. It's over 45 feet wide.
They as in the developer?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the problem then, so at peak, morning and afternoon, traffic queue heading east on Madison goes from Jackson all the way back to Concordia Cemetery, which is on the other side of Altenheim, okay? The median planters didn't help that. Taking away right lane, right lane relief by putting in the bump outs didn't help that situation. And every day at peak now, Jackson and Displanes is backed up all the way to Monroe. And if drivers know that they can exploit a right turn on Van Buren, it's going to be introducing, so they're going to have to come up with some creative, you know, private use. You know, there's also some questions out there about the north-south portion of Van Buren, whose ownership it's under. And that's been studied by our legal team, by SEBEL. It does need a ton of repair. It's a concrete street. It's in dire conditions from the beating it takes from buses. But that's a long answer to, you know, it's a complicated piece. I have had developers say, look, I've got people at the CTA that will, you know, help find a path forward with that. But then again, you're taking traffic off of Jackson, you're dumping it onto Van Buren, because it's a shorter distance. So it's, there's a domino to all of this. And it's a lot more complicated than people think. And the hews and cries from residents at the Grove trying to get to work in morning peak and afternoon peak are, have been taken serious by staff during this entire period. It is probably one of the biggest self-limiting factors in future development.
So, you know, to echo what Director Glinky said, you know, definitely there are concerns there. I think it's things that, I think that that topic is something that we can talk about simultaneously with development. You know, it's, I don't know that we necessarily have to solve that issue before we can move forward with development, but we know that the traffic issues are going to be affected by whatever is put there. And that has to be a very important and very involved part of the decision-making process. So at this point, I want to be, you know, cognizant of the fact that we do have another regular meeting here in a half an hour. You know, I want to kind of just put it out there one more time to the council, if you have any other outstanding questions. I mean, this is the very beginning of the process, so I don't want anybody to feel that, you know, if direction is given in one way, that, you know, we've made a decision on the Altenheim. That is, couldn't be farther from the truth. You know, but the process, there is a process to getting there. And, you know, one, I want to thank everybody for having this discussion tonight. Personally, as the village administrator, I think I've gotten more direction out of the last 90 minutes, you know, having everybody here discussing it. So that's, you know, for that, I thank you. I've got some boxes that I can check off, that we can, you know, now put behind us or, you know, make some movement on. So, you know, going forward, this was a great conversation on, you know, RFP, RFQ. You know, at this point, I'm looking for some direction as to whether or not you want us to start working on an RFP. I mean, you know, the information would come back to the council, you know, as we've done an RFP in the past, you know, staff starts by putting the information together. You know, we'll certainly bring drafts to the council as we go along with it. You know, you may decide at some point that, you know, internally, you want, we are limited in what we can do, and we may want to look elsewhere for some assistance to that, and that's fine as well. But I think staff can certainly start the RFP process of at least putting it together. And then we can, you know, review it as we go along and decide, you know, if it's done well, great. If you want somebody else to come in and take a look at it, we certainly can do that in the future as well.
I think you can start from a very high level, right? Just to give us a sense of what would go into it. It's obviously going to have lots of feedback. Commissioner Nero's not here. And of course, you know, we're a long way from entering into any kind of, you know, binding agreements, right? But it is probably time to start testing the market and seeing what could be realized. We should think about how much of the property could be developed, take another look at those maps. And, you know, we can, we'll certainly come back here in the open and discuss it, but it's not something that you can't talk to colleagues about, like, whether it's over coffee or whatever. Let's obviously be mindful of the open meetings. Let's obviously be mindful of the Open Meetings Act. You can go see Director Glinky, go see Administrator Entler, ask questions to the engineer. But we just need to start really kind of answering some of our own questions and moving forward. So, Commissioners, anything else?
I hope this isn't a stupid question, but I'm sure there are other people who also don't know the answer to this. When we do an RFP, let's say, you know, for the Altenheim specifically, would we say, like, "Hey, we want to develop, you know, for example, four acres?" And then they decide where on the free land that we have available, they would put it? Do we say we want it on this portion specifically? Like, how does that work?
So, I mean, my personal opinion is that, you know, before we were to issue an RFP, that we come to some agreement as to how much of the land that the council wants to develop. But, you know, I mean, that's something that you guys can decide on that. I think it's one aspect of the development process that, you know, you can control 100%. You know, the council gets to pick exactly how much land they want to give back. A couple of things I would keep into consideration, though, is anything that the village retains, they also have to maintain. And so, you know, what does that look like? You know, is that Public Works having to take care of it? Is it, you know, coming back and having to do another project on this land, you know, for whatever it is proposed there? So those are some things to consider for that. Just to kind of, did I answer that question for you? Okay, so just to kind of recap what we've got tonight, we're going to work to pull back from the IGA for the Invest and Cook. We're going to do a little bit more research on the Utility Berry project with ComEd. So we'll come back to the council with more information with that. We're going to work with the Altenheim on the potential sale of the buffer area. We'll start that process. I know that Commissioner Vogt has, you know, she wants to see if we can somehow keep the north and the south connected. So we'll come back with potentially some options, see if we can make that happen, and propose that to the council. And then we will also, staff will also start at a high level of the preparation of putting an RFP together, knowing that that process is going to take a little bit of time. But we'll get that started, and, you know, we'll have continued discussions in regard to what that looks like.
May I add one tiny thing to the end of that? Just, I know we don't need to slow anything down, but I do want, if we are going to move forward talking about the RFP process, that it is... We're very intentional, and there's a lot of communication. I feel like sometimes things happen that maybe one of us should have been, you know, a part of that conversation. And I just don't want to see something like this sort of getting away from us. And all of a sudden, we're in a place where this happens a little too often, where it's like, "Well, we're so far down the road, we have to just kind of keep going." So I just really want this process to be very intentional and a lot of communication.
Noted.
Commissioners, any further comments, closing comments, questions?
I just want to thank everybody for attending this meeting and all the residents who are here today. And especially, I mean, residents who made public comments, but everybody who is here to listen. And it's appreciated by all of us that you're here. And we thank you for being here today. And thank you, Director Glinky, and Jim, and Rachel for participating and helping us clarify and make good decisions today. Thank you.
Commissioners, is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Maxham. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Maxham?
Aye.
Commissioner Mellon-Rogovan?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hoskins?
Aye. The special meeting is adjourned. Regular meeting at 7:00 PM.